Please let me call to order the Bristol, Tennessee City Council meeting, May 4th, 2021. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Keaton.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Luttrell.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Fire Robin.
Here.
I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet has been provided as you enter city council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during the appearance of citizens section of our agenda. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask Chief Mike Carrier to lead us into our invocation.
Mayor, Council, it's always an honor to be able to come before you and open your meeting with prayer. And so having said that, let us pray. The most kind and gracious heavenly Father, as we come before you tonight, we do thank you for all your many blessings. Lord, we thank you for your grace that you've poured out upon us so often and so frequent. And Lord, as we come before you tonight, this first time that we've been able to come back together in person to a formal meeting, we thank you, Lord, for the improvements that we've seen in the pandemic picture across our world and across our nation. Lord, we know that we're seeing a little light at the end of the tunnel, but that don't mean we're out of the pandemic yet. Tonight, Lord, as we think about all those that have been affected by the coronavirus, we pray, dear God, that your blessings will be upon the families of all those who have lost loved ones to it and those many that are sick and many that are in the hospital today that are struggling and fighting for life on ventilators. We ask, Lord, that you would just be with them and just pray, Lord, that you would just give them your peace and you would just touch them with your healing hand. We know, Lord, that your word says that we have not because we ask not. Your word also says that wisdom comes from you. And so we just thank you, Lord, for all the wisdom that you've given so many people that have been able to develop this vaccine on such a short timeframe. And we just pray, Lord, you would just be with them. We pray tonight for our nation, a nation that we've seen become so divided over the last few months. We pray, Lord, for unity. We pray for the leaders of our nation. Pray, Lord, that you would just give them your wisdom and pray, Lord, that they would just govern from the heart and not from the poll numbers that so many of them look to. Tonight, Lord, as we come to this meeting of the Bristol, Tennessee City Council, and this truly is a great place to live, it's a great place to work, we pray for these leaders here tonight. We pray, Lord, for our mayor, our city council, our city manager, and the rest of the management team. We ask, dear God, that you would give these tonight the wisdom that they need to make the decisions that would move our city forward and help this place to continue to be such a great place to live, a great place to work. We pray all this in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
If everyone remains standing, I'll lead us in the invocation of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sora, do you have any items to be added to the agenda?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
We have five proclamations and one recognition on tonight's agenda. First, we have a proclamation designating the week of May 16 through 22nd, 2021, as National Emergency Medical Services Week. I'll read this proclamation and we'll have Lieutenant Jason Johnson of the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department come up and receive the proclamation. Proclamation, excuse us. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill the gap by providing important out of hospital care, including preventative maintenance or, excuse me, medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out of hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency and medical service teams where whether career or volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of American, excuse me, emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, proclaim May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme, this is VMS caring for our communities, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
We want to thank you all for the proclamation and the recognition of VMS Week. The theme, obviously, they said earlier, was caring for our communities, and that's something we strive to do at a high level each and every day, and we could not do that without your support. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Next, we have National Public Works Week. I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Benz Turner to read this proclamation.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital to the importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Bristol, Tennessee. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Bristol, Tennessee, to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Be it now, now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, proclaims May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Who is? Matt Garland?
No.
No. Excuse me, back that one. Will Witcher?
Wes Ritchie.
And Wes Ritchie.
Wes Ritchie.
Will and Wes.
Honorable Mayor, Council, and City Manager, thank you for this award. Will Witcher and I accept on behalf of all 95 public works employees, thank you very much. We'll take this back and display it very proudly. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll get back on track. Next, we have a proclamation designating the week of May 5th, excuse, May 9th through 15th, as Economic Development Week. This time, I'd like to ask Councilman Chad Keen to read that proclamation.
Whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate enterprise, enterprise in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. Whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including ruler, urban, local, state, and federal governments, private-public partnerships, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers assist our existing industries and businesses, which are the cornerstone of our local economy, to continue to thrive and grow. And whereas the Industrial Development Board works alongside and in support of the city's economic development team, providing diverse experience, expertise, and leadership. Whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their corner of the world. And whereas the economic development team is valued and has the admiration and appreciation for the work they do in the city of Bristol, Tennessee. Therefore, be it resolved that mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim May 9th through 15th, 2021, as Economic Development Week, and reminds individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and improving the quality of life. This fourth day of May 2021, Mayor Malin Luttrell.
I'd like to ask Matt Garland to come down, please.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager, thank you very much for the recognition. We appreciate all the input and help that you provide us in the Economic Development Department throughout this year. With the pandemic, economic development has been challenging, but we're moving forward. We're looking forward to next year and years to come. Again, thank you very much for your help. We appreciate it. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add in for how much we appreciate our whole team with economic development? And that's been a great team for quite some time. We've got our folks on staff in the Economic Development Department. We also have our community relations that work hand in hand and work with BTS as well. So, and not to mention the rest of the city staff when needed. But we're thrilled with the work that happens with our economic development. So just want to add that and thank y'all, especially during this Economic Development Week. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation designating the week of May 2nd through the 8th, 2021, as National Travel and Tourism Week. I would like to ask Councilwoman Lee Powers to read the proclamation. And we have with us tonight Ms. Alicia Phelps, Executive Director of Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association, that will receive her proclamation.
And how appropriate, being from Bristol, the home of Bristol Motor Speedway, the birthplace of country music, a vibrant downtown, believing Bristol is with us this evening, along with our retail tourism destination at the Pinnacle. Unparalleled, not to mention our vibrant outdoor living assets as well. So it's with my pleasure that we recognize travel and tourism this week. Whereas the power of travel has been a consistent driver of Bristol's economy workforce, and a robust travel industry, we know, provides significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than $2.6 trillion in economic output in 2019 alone, with $1.1 trillion spent directly by travelers in the U.S. And whereas travel has been the foundation of a healthy workforce, serving as one of the largest private sector employers in the U.S., supporting 17 million jobs in 2019. And whereas spending by travelers has aided state and local governments alike, generating $180 billion in tax revenue in 2019 to support essential services and our programs. And whereas travel and tourism-dependent businesses and organizations, 83% of which are small businesses, are responsible for welcoming visitors from all around the world to explore Bristol, and they have come from all around the world, and all our community has to offer. And whereas last year, the coronavirus pandemic devastated every sector of the travel industry with staggering declines in 2020 compared to 2019, affecting every community in our country. And whereas tourism is the second-largest industry in Tennessee, generating an economic impact of more than $23 billion in travel expenditures in 2019 prior to the pandemic. And whereas Sullivan County ranked seventh, get that, seventh, out of 95 counties in Tennessee in economic impact from travel in 2019, generating more than $427 million in direct tourism expenditures and supporting 3,641 jobs. And whereas the travel industry cannot recover without the full return of leisure and business travel, as well as meetings and events by both domestic and international visitors. And whereas the rebound of travel will drive the rebuilding of the U.S. economy and the American workforce. And whereas the power of travel will revive Bristol and the United States and drive us forward to an even more prosperous future. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, Malin Luttrell, does hereby proclaim May 2nd through 8th of 2021 as National Travel and Tourism Week in Bristol, and urges the citizens of Bristol to join in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in our city this fourth day of May 2021.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, on behalf of the Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association, thank you for this proclamation. The Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association is a nonprofit tourism marketing organization recognized by the Tennessee Department of Tours Development, and we also serve the eight counties here in northeast Tennessee. And with iconic destinations like the birthplace of country music, Bristol Motor Speedway, and of course downtown Bristol and State Street, we feel that our industry is ready for the bounce back, ready to make that economic recovery, as will be vital to that. And as you had mentioned in the proclamation, visitor spend in a non-pandemic year, we were on a record spending $911 million back into northeast Tennessee alone. So we're ready for that, and thank you all so much for this.
Next, we have a proclamation designating the week of May 9th through the 15th, as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2021, as Police Officers Memorial Day. I would like to ask Councilwoman Margaret Fire Robin to read this proclamation. And with us tonight, we'll have Lieutenant Jimmy Dillard to accept this proclamation. Ms. Fire Robin?
Thank you. And before I start, I just wanted to note that I believe it was in Sunday's Bristol Herald Courier, that Ben Tally, who's retired Bristol, Virginia teacher and recognized as a national teacher, did a column that was excellent with recognizing our police officers and recognizing where we are today in our country. So I recommend, if you haven't read it, it's a great article to read. Also, I want to just point out Chief Blaine Way, that this, I guess, is your last police week?
His next one?
No, his last police week, Peace Officers Memorial Day. Thank you. I'm on it. Anyway, so just want to dedicate this to you a little bit. And thank you for all that you've done, and it's great to have folks here in the room with us during this time. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department. Whereas there were 56,034 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2019, resulting in approximately 17,188 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Whereas 394 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 295, 182 fatalities are COVID-19-related. Officers killed in 2020, which are the deadliest, which was the deadliest year in decades. And 99 officers killed in previous years, but whose stories of sacrifice had been lost to the history until now. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund 33rd Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2021. Whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year, May 9th through 15th, 2021. Whereas May 15th, 2021, is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of Bristol, of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, formally designates May 9th through 15th, 2021, as Police Week, and May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. This fourth day of May 2021, Mayor Malin Luttrell.
I want to start by saying thank you to the city council for the proclamation. Thank you for recognizing National Police Week, May 9th through the 15th. We appreciate your support, more than you know. We appreciate the community. We are blessed to serve in this community. We can't go anywhere in uniform without having somebody come up to us, thank us for our service. We appreciate that. It's encouraging to us in the world we live in. We appreciate that more than y'all know. I'm going to mention, speak briefly about the National Peace Officer Memorial Day, and then I'll get out of the way. In 1962, President Kennedy designated May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day. He set that day aside as a day for us to remember the men and women that died in the line of duty. Since, in 2020, last year alone, counting COVID deaths, we lost 362 police officers in the line of duty. So far this year, we've lost another 119. That's 481 men and women that got up for work, put a uniform on, and went to work and didn't return home to their families. Here in the city of Bristol, we have lost four officers in the line of duty. Samuel Childress in 1903, Clarence Maines in 1926, Jackie Phillips in 1988, and most recently, Mark Vance, 2004. It's important that we never forget the sacrifices that these men and women made for their communities. It's important that we don't forget the families of these men and women that sacrificed for their communities. And also, we need to remember the officers that go out here every day to protect our communities. I'm fortunate to be part of this department. We got some of the best police officers in the country right here in this city. They come into work, work hard, provide the best police services in the country, and no matter what they face today, they're going to get up tomorrow, and they're going to come in and they're going to do their job again. I'm honored to be part of that. Thank y'all for your time. We have one item of recognition on tonight's agenda. The city has over 350 full and part-time employees that serve the community on a daily basis. We frequently hear of employees that go above and beyond in their service. To that end, the Bristol First program has been developed to recognize their efforts. Tonight, we honor our latest recipient of the Bristol First Award. Mr. John Luttrell, Director of Community Relations, is present to give us a brief overview of the program and announce tonight's award winners.
Thank you, members of council, Mr. Sora. The Bristol First Award was first established in October of 2014 to recognize city employees for service to the public, leadership, service to other city employees, efficiency, creativity, and inventiveness. Nominations are accepted from fellow employees, elected officials, and community members throughout the year. Since the award's inception, 51 employees have been recognized for their achievements, special contributions, and dedication to public service. Tonight, we add two more names to this distinguished list. These gentlemen are members of the Department of Development Services in the Utility Services Division, and they were nominated by Mr. Will Witcher, Utility Services Manager. I'll read from the nomination submission. On the morning of March 30th, 2021, our two recipients were reading meters on Wildwood Drive when they noticed a community member who appeared to be in distress. When they approached, the individual indicated he might be having a heart attack, and asked the two city employees to call 911. After calling for help, they waited with the gentleman until paramedics arrived and took him to the hospital. Because the man lived alone, these gentlemen took the time to put his two small dogs back inside the home, lock the door, and then explain the situation to a neighbor. The neighbor indicated that the gentleman did not have any family in the area, but was able to contact a close friend. Tragically, this community member subsequently passed away. However, in his time of need, these two individuals acted quickly and demonstrated great compassion during this incredibly difficult situation. Their actions are a perfect example of the high level of service to the public that this award seeks to recognize. Tonight, we show our appreciation to Mr. Jeff Miller and Mr. Brandon Rutherford, recipients of the Bristol First Award for May 2021.
I think I can speak for all of us to say that we've really missed this component of our...
of our City Council meeting.
As I learned at the passing of the gentleman two weeks ago, the only good that I can think that would come from this is that maybe in that five-day span from Tuesday to Saturday, when he passed away, as we are all Christians in here, hopefully he found Jesus in that five days. So that's the only thing I wanted to say. I want to thank you guys, councilmen, city mayor, city manager as well, for the opportunity and employment with the city during these times as well. This means a lot to me. Thank you.
We have two presentations on tonight's agenda. First, we have Ms. Maggie Elliott, Executive Director, Believe in Bristol, with us to provide an update on the COVID-19 Grant Assistance Program offered to Bristol, Tennessee restaurants earlier this year. Maggie?
Thank you, Mayor, and Members of Council. It is my honor to be here to update you all on this program. So a little bit of backstory on how we got here and why we focused on restaurants specifically for this program. In our research, I found that restaurants got hit harder than any other industry during the pandemic. It was definitely disproportionate, and the lack of resources in front of them to be able to come back was evident. So a few statistics that led us to this observation. For Tennessee specifically, 333,000 jobs are in the restaurant industry. So that accounts for 11% of Tennessee employment. 17% of those restaurants nationwide closed due to COVID-19. And it's very likely that that statistic is actually a lot higher. This was from our research back in December. So some of those numbers had yet to come in. The restaurant did, the restaurant industry did end up, ended 2020 with total sales that were $240 billion below what the National Restaurant Association's pre-pandemic forecast for the year was. And we noticed that especially Bristol-specific, outside dining options were limited. So in conversations between our organization and city staff and seeing nationwide creative use of public space, like you'll see with the different igloos and tents, we wanted to see what was possible for Bristol. So we did research the use of public space in December 2020, and then we brought some suggestions to you all in January. In that research, some of those concerns, as far as the creative use of the public space, such as the igloos and community tents, dining tents, was for our organization to be able to maintain those. We are 1 1/2 employees, so it's a very labor-intensive setup, a lot of maintenance necessary, storage and transportation. Then, of course, there were lots of safety and liability concerns there, especially if those were heated tents. The liabilities there were of great concern for us. So we came to, our recommendation for you all was a mini-grant program that we could actually give directly to our restaurants so that they can utilize those grant funds based on their individual needs. So in assessing, especially downtown, because that's our area of focus, there wasn't a main public space that we found could be of great use as far as community dining goes, that would benefit the restaurants on a greater scale. We were also concerned about the staffing that it would take to, for the restaurants to be able to even utilize those types of spaces. So these mini-grants gave them the opportunity to apply the funds based on their specific situation. Our recommendation upon conversations with council was for this grant program to be administered citywide. It's the first program that our organization has actually offered citywide. And so it posed a bigger challenge, but more on the administrative side and less on the safeties and liabilities. So we did come up with a tiered structure. Anything from tables, umbrellas, chairs, some smaller items. Restaurants and food-based businesses could apply up to $1,000, and gradually making their way up to tents, heaters, igloo installations, and greenhouses, or bigger-scale tent structures could go up to $5,000. And we did have several eligibility requirements in place. They did have to be a food and beverage-based business, so this expanded it outside of restaurants specifically, and we were able to assist some breweries as well and tap houses. But they did need to be within the city limits of Bristol, Tennessee. And those applicants had to obviously be a legal business entity, 50 or fewer full-time employees to equate them as a small business, have experienced financial hardships. This was not a hard thing for our food and beverage-based businesses to be able to show our organization. We did require a minimum of 25% decline in sales. We did take any quarter of 2019 compared to 2020 to show that financial hardship. And one of the most important, they're all important pieces, but one of the most important was they needed to be in compliance with the Tennessee Pledge Guidelines, Sullivan County Tennessee Executive Orders and Sullivan County Health Department Recommendations. This was really important to us, because if we were granting this money out, we wanted to make sure that we were giving it to businesses that were being responsible during the pandemic. I'm happy to report, we were able to reward 10 businesses through this grant. The additional allocation on top of our annual appropriation from the city of Bristol was $30,000. The equipment requests were not a surprise for us, based off of our tiered structure. So it was a variation of tables, chairs, heaters, tents, some vinyl siding, and even a deck addition. So if we're going to look at surprises, maybe the deck addition was a nice surprise. So you can see the breakdown of those businesses in addition to the 10% administrative support for Believe in Bristol to be able to offer this grant citywide. The grants did go up to $5,000. We only had one recipient in the $5,000, but nearly everyone was actually able to receive their grant that they did request. We did have to deny a few applications due to being out of compliance with the Tennessee Pledge Guidelines. But those who were awarded were either at their request amount or were very, very close to it. All of these grant recipients, typically with a Believe in Bristol, we've offered a few different grant opportunities in our tenure, and typically they are reimbursement grants. We decided to do this one a little bit differently. To backtrack a little bit, the application process was very simple for our food and beverage-based businesses. It was a one-page application for them to submit to our organization. Our Economic Vitality Committee reviewed the applications initially and gave recommendations to our executive committee, who made the final call and did those final compliance checks. It was the decision of the executive committee in order to get these grant proposals implemented as soon as possible, especially as we were reviewing this, we were in some of the coldest months of the year. We wanted to make sure that these businesses could utilize these funds as soon as possible. So upon approval of their grant application, we were able to administer those checks to them. And so they were able to spend the money immediately, instead of being reimbursed later. This is a decision we are very happy with, because we do fear that it would have just delayed the whole process a little bit longer. We did have two rounds of the grant application. We distributed the majority of the funds in the first round. $21,000 was allocated in the first round, and then we were able to assist three additional businesses in that second round. And then some of the examples of implementation that's already been in place, this is just a small sample, it's four businesses out of our 10. But you can see there's some tables and chairs, outdoor dining, nice vinyl siding that's been installed at Backyard Grill, some tents at Borderline, and then the new addition, deck addition, at Cascade Drafthouse. Some of the grants, especially in the second round, are still being installed. So we will continue to see implementation of this grant program. But again, a copy of their invoices and expense reports, since we did things a little bit backwards of what we're used to. All of those receipts are due to our organization by the first of next month, June 1st. And then business owners have to provide a summary report to our organization within six months of receipt of the grant. So we'll also receive those summaries in the next little bit as well. We are very fortunate and very grateful to have been able to offer this to our food and beverage-based businesses within the city and to venture into this private-public venture that you all gave us the opportunity for. I look forward to being able to give you those final summaries. And again, thank you all so very much for the opportunity. I don't know if you have any questions, but I would love to entertain them if you do.
I've got just one, I guess. So how are you handling this with, when they're sending in the receipts later? If they're less than the amount of the grant that was awarded, is that going back into the pot and then to give to someone else in a different round? Or how is that going to work?
That is TBD, but that is definitely on our radar if that is the case. I've had at least one business who ended up actually getting supplies for a lot cheaper than what their initial application was. That was not something that was on our radar initially. We thought we were fully anticipating everyone would spend every last penny towards this. So we have that on our radar, and unfortunately, we won't be able to know, obviously, until those receipts come in June 1st. But we are prepared to turn around and be able to offer more if there is any additional funding left over.
So the receipts will be in for those 10 by June 1st?
Correct, by June 1st.
Okay, perfect.
There is, to note, there is one business on there, and this was not in our initial plans, but there is one business on there that is actually a new business. Because of the number of applications that we received, we were able to award a new business. So that is the only business that we are anticipating will probably not meet that June 1st deadline. However, we, there are new neighbors, and so we are prepared to be in close contact with them on their progress there.
Any more questions? Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Ms. Tanya Kestner, Executive Director of Bristol Public Library, to provide counsel with information regarding programs and community events at the Bristol Public Library.
It's hard to go after Maggie, she's so good. I'll take this off. Well, good evening, Mayor Luttrell, council members, city manager, Mr. Sora, and staff and citizens. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I know that it's been a while since you've had a library update. I'm a first-time director, started January 6, 2020, so that might tell you something. But I want to make sure that from now on, I or another library advocate come here to update you frequently on what's happening at the library. So we're going to make that a priority, because I've wanted to since I started. So tonight, I just wanted to catch you up on some library updates, starting back, I guess, during the pandemic. We closed our building March 18th. And when we did that, we were monitoring the reports from the hospital, the CDC, and other sources, seeking a way to still safely provide services for the community. In May, we were the first library in the region, in our area, to offer curbside service. So, and actually, we were the first ones to open our building as well. As an essential service for many in the area, we felt it was our responsibility to provide as much as we could do safely. So curbside offered us a short-term way to do that, while we kept our building closed. July 6, most of those law libraries were still closed, and we reopened our building with the appropriate safety precautions, including PPE and social distancing measures. And we were open for five months. I keep saying this, but while most other libraries remained closed, library board members, actually, and some staff from other libraries came to us to see how we were operating while we were open, so that they could take some of that back with them. We closed again in December, because the numbers here in this area were so bad. And we reopened March 15th. We plan to return to pre-pandemic hours, June 1st, as we start our summer reading program. And we continue to remain vigilant about our PPE and sanitization, and we will continue to do so. Curbside was such a popular service that we have continued to, we've decided to make it permanent, so that anybody that wishes to use that can continue to do so. During this time of the pandemic, the family bathroom was completed, thanks to the Library Board Foundation and Burwell Construction. For National Library Week, we wanted to try to give back some to the community by promoting a food drive, so we did that for both the Tennessee and Virginia Food Banks. We also offered fine amnesty from when we opened on March 15th through National Library Week. And this allowed people to return their overdue items without penalty. And as a result, we actually received $2,500 worth of our resources back. So that was nice. And people were glad to be back during that time. We also renewed 169 cards. As a result of our success during fine amnesty and in recognizing that fines are a barrier to library access and information, especially low-income families and working families, we've decided to go fine-free as of July 1st. This is another way we can be better stewards of public funds and be more welcoming to our library users. It supports our library's mission of equitable service. And fine-free doesn't mean that it's responsibility-free, because materials, if they're not returned in good condition, they'll still be billed. Also, it's important to note that Washington County Public Library, Virginia, is fine-free. Sullivan County Tennessee Library is fine-free. Johnson City Tennessee Library Public Library is going fine-free. So we're not the first, but we don't want to be the last for our community. Our Facilities Committee meets once a month, and we're working to ensure that the library is also good caretakers of the facility. And I'd like to say a special thank you to Mr. Terry Napier for always being available to assist with both hands-on and with expert advice at our APOCA branch, as well as our main branch. He attends all of our facilities meetings, so we're very thankful to you. There's a lot of, I did leave a handout, and there's a lot of data there, but I wanted to mention a couple of things briefly that I feel supports the library as essential to our community. Circulation dropped only by 17% from 2019 to 2020. And that is why we were completely closed for two months and only offering curbside for three. 2019, we circulated 241,000 items, and 2020, we circulated 202,000 items. So I think that's pretty good and speaks well of our library. Jones Creativity Center, during the time of the pandemic, we had 154 people still do job searches while we were open. And 53 people that did those job searches actually called back to tell us that they found, they were hired, they found jobs because of those job searches. That's pretty impressive. That's amazing to me. So we're hoping to do more in-person programming, but we have been doing lots of virtual programming, obviously. This is the first time I've spoken to a group like this, I think, in a while in person, so it feels weird. But we are going to get back to that, and we've also learned to adapt. And some of these programs have been so good, we want to keep them. Also, I'd like to say something about the library staff. They are super supportive and excellent to work with. And during the pandemic, while we were open and they were hearing that all these other libraries were closed, I never heard anybody complain. They care about the community, and they want to be able to serve the community. And so you see what a group of people I work with. They help me. Right now, the library is providing the 2021 tax forms and instruction books. We're also providing the IRS with rooms for consultation by appointment. We're going to be a vaccination station or pod every Thursday in May. We're going to be a vaccination station or pod every Thursday in May from noon to 3:00, and in June, from noon to 3:00. It's open to anyone 18 or older. And that starts this Thursday. Also, May 15, you can take the Tennessee Boat Test Exam if you know somebody that wants to do that at the Jones Creativity Center. So this is just a few updates on what's been happening and what's happening in the future with programming. And in closing, I want to thank the City of Bristol, Tennessee for always supporting us. And I know that you have, when, let's be honest, not everybody does, but you guys always have. So thank you for that. And not only monetarily, but certainly that too. Margaret, thank you. She's on several of our boards and committees. Your continued support shows that you care about literacy, education, digital access for our citizens, and support our mission of expanding minds and building communities. We want to continue, the library wants to continue to help the cities get back on their feet with our vital resources and services, like the Jones Creativity Center. So we're here for you too. And anyhow, I don't want to talk too long, I didn't have anything, presentation, but we're here for you, and I want to thank you for being here for us.
Thank you.
So do you have any questions for me about anything?
For those that may be watching from home, y'all are going to continue curbside. What is involved with curbside at the library?
Curbside, if you have something that you, a book on hold or anything on hold, you can just drive up. We have a sign outside that has the number, you can call, and you just tell them your name, and we'll have it checked out for you and take it out to you. It's just pretty easy.
And that's either checking it out online ahead of time or calling for, asking for a particular book?
Yeah, you can do either one. I mean, sometimes people will pull up at curbside and say, "Give me a fantasy book." Somebody will say, "It might take a minute, but I'll be right back." Can you be a little more specific? But anyhow, we'll take care of it anyway. Whatever you need, if you don't want to come in, we'll do our best to take care of you through curbside.
We'd just like to say, before the library was renovated, I raised our three children going to the library. And now our daughter, along with myself, we're raising our grandchildren going to the library. And it's a wonderful facility, and I know y'all worked very hard to see to it that's maintained and constantly being restocked. Thank you for all that you're doing. We're so lucky to have the library that we have.
Thank you. And that is a fine example of what I mean by you supporting us. You guys are library users, so I appreciate you saying that. And it's, I'm grateful. It's empowering for me to be in this position. I worked at the Bristol Library years ago as a teen librarian for almost a decade, and coming back to do this is pretty amazing. So thank you.
So I'll just add a couple of things, if that's okay. First off, Jonathan Harden is here, and he is the Library Board Vice President. And we are always glad to see you, and he's been on several years and been very enthusiastic supporter. Secondly, for everybody here and also anybody watching, just Tennessee Reads program is phenomenal. It is digital, and I don't know what's the server and what's the platform or whatever, but Libby is the app that you use to see your books and check them out or whatever, but it's through Tennessee Reads. We are very fortunate, the state of Tennessee. It's across the state that we get to access those books. So some places, it is the single library, it's what they purchase. Ours, we have access across the state. So it's phenomenal. I read digital books all the time, in addition to still hard copy books. But if you haven't discovered it, discover it either on your own or go to the library, and they'll show you how to do it. And I think there's tutorials also available. Also, I just want to recognize our library foundation, and Erin Downs is the president. And also, thanks to her leadership several years ago, we took money that was left from the building of the library that was for facilities and invested that. And I think it was $489,000. And just in the past two and a half years, three and a half years, we have seen an incredible return on that investment. And some of those things that have benefited from, Tanya has already mentioned, we helped with the family bathroom, I serve on that foundation board. Family bathroom during the COVID, the children's area got, has gotten some facelift. Currently, the teen area has a few issues. We redid that completely a few years ago, but some acoustical issues and some flooring that needs to not be carpeted. And also, working on the center space in between to give it a facelift. So just really pleased with what the foundation can do. So if anybody here or anybody watching wants to donate, there's a button on the library website for the foundation, and welcome donations. And lastly, just a real thanks to Tanya for what she came, and before you knew it, it was COVID. And so just congratulations for everything you've done during that time. And it's a lot of fun. You're great. So we appreciate you all a whole lot, and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you all. Thank you, Margaret. I appreciate the time.
We have two public hearings of tonight's agenda. The public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 21-6, amending the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee by designating property located at 2467 Weaver Pike as R1A Low Density Single Family. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Mr. Mayor, as council will recall, last month concluded the annexation request by Mr. and Mrs. Joshua Roberts for property located at 2467 Weaver Pike. Also, last month, you approved on first reading the new zoning designation for this property. As we discussed, the county was, Sullivan County had the property zoned as R1, which is low-density, single-family residential. The proposed zoning designation for this property now is the city's R1A, which is very, very similar in terms of low-density residential development, and is within the characteristics of the surrounding property, which is like zoned as R1 in Sullivan County. Plan of Services for the annexation does include the recommendation for designating the property as R1A, and this did receive the unanimous approval of our planning commission on February 15th. Mr. Beavers is going to illustrate the property around it and the property itself.
Good evening. Mr. Sora did a great job on that to summarize everything, so I'll just skip to the picture here. On the picture, and Terry's got a good pointer here that I can use with the laser, but you'll see the property that we're discussing in red, and that was an annexation you all approved last month. If you notice, the properties in yellow are Sullivan County zoning R1 surrounding it, and it was zoned R1 at the time of annexation. So staff, in looking at that zoning and our zoning, R1A, felt they were very similar and felt it was appropriate to recommend an R1A zoning for this property. And as Mr. Sora did state, planning commission at their February 15th meeting, as part of the Plan of Services, did make a recommendation for an R1A zoning on this. With that, I can answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address before making your comments. Seeing none. Excuse me. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I know several of you. My concern is with the annexation of the area, what is it going to be used for? I am the president and head commissioner of South Fork Bristol Water Utility District, and all that area in there is serviced by our utility. And what my worry was, is there anything trying to happen to take over the water? Because we're a public utility, we live off the revenue, and that's my only concern. Is there any plans?
Let me speak to that. Again, the zoning tonight really establishes this as low-density residential. It is served by the Rural Utility District, and there's no plans to try to move forward with anything else for that residential zone district.
I'm not fighting it, I'm just wondering, curious, okay? And number one, I want to say thank you for taking and honoring our Lord Jesus Christ and honoring our country. That means a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this public hearing is hereby closed. The public hearing is hereby open for Resolution 21-43, adopting a Community Development Block Grant and Home Consortium Action Plan for fiscal 2022. Ms. Christina Blevins, Community Development Specialist, is with us to summarize this matter for the public.
Let me get out my handy-dandy binder. Mayor Letrel, members of council, City Manager, Mr. Sora, my name is Christina Blevins, as you know, and I am pleased to be here with you in person to show you our plans for the one-year action plan tonight. Just a couple brief, basic notes on what is the Community Development Block Grant Program, also known as CDBG. It was created by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. Our Bristol program started in 1976, and the program is under the Community Planning and Development Division of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We are also what's called an entitlement community, which means Bristol gets an allocation of funding every year, much like other communities around us, Johnson City, Kingsport, Bristol, Virginia. Three national objectives for the CDBG program. First and most important, activities directly benefiting persons of low and moderate income, activities which aid in the elimination of slums and blight, and activities designated to meet community development needs having a particular urgency. So for this year, we have been allocated $211,301. We'd like to put it, as you see here, our housing rehab reconstruction program, we'd like to allocate $120,000. Public services, we like to give $25,000 to the YWCA for their childcare day center. They have a sliding-scale day center payment plan there. Arch, which is Appalachian Regional Coalition on Homelessness, sorry. Demolition and clearance, which is part of our neighborhood revitalization, we'd like to give $30,000. Sidewalks, which is part of public facilities, $10,000, which we have already several sidewalk programs going, and this is just to continue those. Program Administration for CDBG, $42,000. Program carryover right now, we have a little over $233,000, and then we are projecting a program income of $20,000. Now, for the Northeast Tennessee-Virginia Home Consortium, the National Affording Housing Act was established in 1990. The intent of the home program is to provide decent, affordable housing to lower-income households, expand the capacity of nonprofit housing providers, strengthen the ability of state and local governments to provide housing, and leverage private sector participation. The home program is much stricter than the Community Development Block Grant Program, and these funds can only be used for housing purposes. So Bristol, Tennessee is the lead entity, which means we are responsible for everything that happens with the home consortium. It's a very large responsibility, but we do that in part with the First Tennessee Development District. They help us administer that program, and we are very thankful for their help and support. Okay, so for the home consortium, we've been allocated $1.1 million, and I won't go over the breakdowns for each one, but HUD requires us to spend a minimum of 15% for CHODOs, which is Community Housing Development Organization. And then everybody else has a broken-down percentage based on need in that community and based on poverty rate, population poverty. So Bluff City actually gets $10,000, which is a little more than maybe they should receive, but that was part of the percentage we established many years ago. So approximate carryover for that program right now is at $2.2 million, and we feel that we will have program income, recaptured funds, of around $80,000 in the coming year. And that would go into whichever community has the program income or recaptured funds. So where can the public pick up the draft plan? This is our second public hearing. Our first public hearing was actually held back in January. We had a 30-day public comment period. Our, this is the second public hearing, we've had another 30-day comment period. The public comment period actually ends on May 7th, so this coming Friday. But people can go to the library, the Bristol Housing Office, Air Office Development Services has a copy, and of course, online at bristletennessee.org if they would like to read the plan. It's about 67 pages. But, you know, it really, we base these projects and programs on the needs of our communities. Also, our Community Development Advisory Committee has recommended the approved numbers, and our Northeast Tennessee-Virginia Home Consortium Board also in their meeting approved our presentation for you tonight. So happy to answer any questions.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address before making your comments. Seeing none, this public hearing is hereby closed. This brings us to the Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address city council on any matter that is not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will not likely be made at this time, since in most cases, neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to city council, or, as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are non-transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I've been provided a list of individuals desiring to address council this evening. First, Mr. James Graham.
I'm very glad to hear you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Trace Rutherford. Ms. Lindsay Holman. Holman, correct me.
While Lindsay makes her way to the podium, I met Lindsay just after the first of the year, responding to some residents and other businesses looking for opportunities for the upcoming Hard Rock at Bristol. And so Lindsay, I asked her to come over, she's looking to get out word and meet folks. And so I'll tell you a little bit about Lindsay. She was born in Abingdon. She graduated from East Tennessee State. She's from southwest Virginia, born and raised here. She worked in higher education for several years, and she's worked on a lot of campaigns in and through southwest Virginia. And she was the campaign manager on Vote Yes for Bristol. She is now the Community Relations Liaison for Hard Rock Bristol. Won't you please welcome Lindsay Holman?
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Councilman Keen, for that introduction. I just wanted to come and introduce myself. Thank you all so much for allowing me to just be here and introduce myself and just kind of make this face-to-face connection. We haven't been able to do that in a while. I was wanting to do that earlier, but I'm so thankful for this opportunity. As Councilman Keen said, I am the Community Relations Liaison, so I am out in the community meeting- meeting with various vendors who are interested in doing business with the folks who are coming into town, Hard Rock Hotel Casino Bristol. So I'm meeting with so many businesses throughout our community and our region on both sides of the state line. We have so much interest, and, you know, based on everything that's happened over the past year-plus, with the pandemic, folks are ready to do business. They're ready to really just have a boost in the economy here. So another way we're out in the community is I am just connecting with community organizations, trying to find creative ways for us to be involved. So in the past few months, I have, we have partnered with the Marsh Regional Blood Center. We've hosted two blood drives over at the former Bristol Mall. So I'm trying to find creative ways to be involved in the community. So I don't want to take up too much of your time. I'm going to leave a stack of my business cards probably right here, and I would love to meet with you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Lindsey. Next, we'll consider appointments to fill two positions on the Community Development Advisory Committee. The term of office will be for a period of three years, ending April 30, 2024. The candidates are Mr. Vernon Perry and Mr. Matthew Slagle. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates? Please mark your ballots and pass them to the city manager. Be read aloud.
I'll just compliment Christina Blevins on her committee that I think they do a great job. She works with them really well. This is Vernon Perry's second term, unless he didn't have a full term the first time. And I'll just, when I first talked to him, he applied for a different board, but it appeared very appropriate for him to be on this board, and I think he's brought a lot to it. So just wanted to say that in his benefit.
Keen votes for Vernon Perry, Matthew Slagle. Luttrell votes for Vernon Perry and Matthew Slagle. Howers votes for Vernon Perry, Matthew Slagle. Turner votes for Vernon Perry and Matthew Slagle. And Fire Robin votes for Vernon Perry and Matthew Slagle.
Next on the agenda is the first reading of Ordinance 21-8, Adopting a Budget and Appropriating Funds for the Fiscal Year, July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize Ordinance 21-8?
Yes, Mayor. This evening starts the formal process of consideration of work that's transpired over the last several months of both staff and council in reviewing and making recommendations for the fiscal '22 budget. Ordinance 21-8 is the formal process of the adoption, the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021. The fiscal '22 budget totals $133,336,862. The municipal portion of that budget remains unchanged from that discussed during our work session last week. It does include the school system's budget. As you might recall, we did not have final numbers from the school system when we discussed this during our budget work session on the 27th of April. It is included in tonight's ordinance and later in our discussion. This does reflect a decrease of $2,175,245, or 1.6% from the fiscal '21 budget. Proposed budget maintains current solid waste fees, stormwater fees, water and sanitary sewer rates. As council is aware, 2021 is a reappraisal year for all real property located within Sullivan County. Once a certified tax rate is known, which will be, we believe will be sometime in July, then council will be asked to consider a formal adoption of the tax rate for fiscal Municipal government portion of the budget stands at $70,315,487. This reflects a decrease of $3,324,880, or 4.5% from the fiscal '21 budget. Proposed budget does focus on the key themes identified by council of economic development, education, infrastructure, and public safety. The budget continues all city programs and services in the past while making strategic capital investments to meet future needs of the community. Major projects include the reconstruction of East Cedar Street, the new construction of a fire station serving East Bristol, construction of sidewalks along Bluff City Highway from Edgemont Avenue to Lavender Lane, and improvements to the bio-solage handling process at our wastewater treatment plant, along with the resurfacing of approximately 14 lane miles of local streets. Key partnerships are also a part of this budget. As council is aware, over the last couple of years, the Tri-City Airports Aerospace Park, in which the City of Bristol, Tennessee contributed substantial resources to the construction of Aerospace Park. This continues and should be completed later this summer. In addition, other partnerships with BTS and TVA, the expansion of the industrial infrastructure in the Bristol Business Park, as well as improvements in Partnership Park, too. In addition, fiscal 2022 includes a 2.4% market rate adjustment for all employees, and employees who are not at their market rate, the balance of that delta, so to speak, is 50% of that will be addressed in this budget to place them within striking distance of the appropriate wage. The school system portion of the budget totals $63,021,099, and is an increase of $1,149,635, or 1.9%. This increase is primarily attributed to an $11,525,473 increase in school federal projects, and this is largely the result of grants from the federal government, including the largest source of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, better known by the acronym ESSR. If the budget, if Ordinance 21-8 is approved tonight on first reading, then a public hearing and second reading will be scheduled next month.
Okay. Does any member of council have a question for staff?
Bill, would you just, in two sentences, go over the market wages adjustment that we're talking about?
Yeah, it's a 2.4% market wage adjustment that will apply to all city employees. In addition, the pay scale as a whole will be adjusted 1.7%. And then, as council will recall, I think in maybe early 2018, or late 2017, we completed a comp class study or a compensation class study, which made recommendations that all of our employees were not at that midpoint, that they should be on their pay scale, given their experience within the jobs related to other markets. And those benchmark cities were those that we typically benchmark of Oak Ridge, Marivault, Johnson City, Kingsport. I think Marstown might have been a part of that also, as well as Athens, Tennessee. But, so, we have implemented a portion of that pay study. The, if you'll recall, we set up a five-year plan. We skipped one of the years during the COVID year. This brings us now to, at the request of council during one of our earlier work sessions, to take away 50% of the remainder of that increment, with fiscal 2023 addressing the balance of that.
So one more year to get our wages up?
One more year after the year that we're going into. Fiscal 2023 should resolve it out.
Mr. Sora, also contained in this is revenues designated for our trails study that has come out. Would you speak to that and to the public meeting associated with that, please?
Yes, I'd be glad to. We have $150,000 set aside in our capital facilities budget to address the trail improvements or the extension of trails in the first phase. And largely, that $150,000, we know that we have some pedestrian trestle crossings. Most of the internal design has been done by our own engineering staff, but the structural element of those pedestrian or bike path bridges does require a different skill set. So some of that $150,000 will be addressed for the design of those pedestrian bridges. The balance will be committed toward the acquisition of the necessary right-of-way to locate the trail. We do have the evening of Tuesday, May 25, at 6:00 p.m. in the gym here at Slater Community Center, we will have a public meeting addressing the trail study. The consultants that prepared the study will be here to review the first phase of that study. As you recall, the study is very comprehensive and will be a multi-year project to address, but the initial phasing is on our horizon now.
And then just one other question. You know, we had talked, we have talked at length about a community center that may encompass an aquatic facility. Would you speak for just a moment about what part of that is included in our budget?
There's a $35,000 budget allotment or allocation to do a facility study to determine what community needs would be in that regard, potential locations of such a facility, and then obviously the financial aspects of an improvement of that nature.
Thank you.
I think also, I mean, on this, we are not, I guess for anyone watching, we're not voting with this budget of the $150,000 in the trails. We are not voting for approving building the trails at this point. This is just the study for that, correct?
It's a budget allocation that will require subsequent action by city council to award an engineering contract, for example, and to proceed with the project in terms of any acquisition of right-of-ways. No, there are other steps. This is simply the first reading, as you indicated, of the budget ordinance to adopt fiscal 2022 budget.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second motion to approve Ordinance 21-A to adopt a budget and appropriate funds for the fiscal year July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022. And I would just say, in making that second, it's great to be in the position that we are with our revenues and to be balanced.
Would any member of council like to discuss anything else on Ordinance 21-8?
I'll just add, the employee compensation, we regret that we've been a little slow with that, but very excited. We compliment our staff all the time, but we need to be sure that behind that, we do what is appropriate to show that we really do appreciate them. Also, with our budget and continued discussions, thank you to the school system for our events today and discussion, this council, this community values education. So we look forward to more talking about what are the next steps to support our education program, our schools, and also the meeting today, and we're fully aware of the quality of life here, that the components that are critical for economic development. Schools taking the lead with that, but other things as well that people look for when they're looking at remaining in a community or moving to a community. So I also think, fortunately with COVID, we are in a position of strength with a lot of opportunities. So I hope as we keep talking and move towards setting our tax rate, that we recognize what those opportunities are going forward and where we can help lead our community with the funding to get to some of what we would like. We're always reminded that we dream pretty big, so we're very proud of the financial status this city has had, as long as I have been on council and prior to that, and we want to be sure that we keep it that way, but also proud that we can move things forward, too. And thank you, Tara, and your staff, and all the department heads. I think sometimes we don't appreciate as much, and certainly the public isn't completely aware that it's more than a six-month process to do a budget. And for the finance department, you then do your audit, and it's like you don't ever get a break, so.
I would just piggyback on what Margaret has said in that, you know, this whole process begins in November. It doesn't feel like we're ever out of budget season, does Mr. Sora?
No, it does not.
We're always in budget season, and I think that that speaks to the viability of our community, our staff. We can never really thank our staff enough in all of their input, direction, guidance, and willingness to just go above and beyond at every turn. And they have, and they do on a day-to-day basis. And it seems only appropriate that we fulfill the comp study as it was presented to us some time ago, and apologies for not having been able to do that even sooner. There's a lot of good stuff in this budget. Our conversations as to how the community moves forwards are continuous. They're very fluid. They are not static. They will not end with the passage of this budget. They will keep flowing, and so for that, we thank staff.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Hearing none, I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the first reading of Ordinance 21-9, Amending the Appropriation of Funds and Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize Ordinance 21-9?
Yes, Mayor. This is our annual housekeeping measure, in which we go back and review revenues and expenditures for particular funds and adjust them based on activity that's occurred during the year that was not anticipated during the budget development phase. As council's aware, both the school system as well as the city has received substantial grants and funds beyond what was anticipated, and most of that, or a lot of that, addressing the COVID-19 situation during the past 12 months. But the majority of these adjustments are related to revenues exceeding anticipated amounts last year. There are a couple of funds, such as the Solid Waste Fund, in which tipping fees and equipment repairs exceeded budgeted expenditures. The Capital Equipment Fund also had some equipment that was ordered in one year and received in another that requires a budget adjustment. In addition, we are required to formally adopt any appropriation amendments as they relate to transfers from one fund to another, and you notice there's several of those, typically like from the Drug Fund to the General Fund, or from Grant Fund to the General Fund. But like I said, these are largely housekeeping. I would like to read through these to formally address them, and then staff can respond to any questions you might have. The General Purpose School Fund revised appropriation to $42,479. School Federal Projects Fund, $7,445,491. Chapter 420 Fund, $7,900,000. Grant Fund, $853,544. Solid Waste Fund, $225,000. Solid Waste Fund, excuse me, the State Street Aid Fund, $975,000. Debt Service Fund, $33,165,924. And I would point out that this addressed the refunding. Typically, our debt service fund is a little over $4 million, and so we did go through several refundings this year, and we have one yet to go. So that's addressed in this. Capital Equipment Fund of $900,000. School Capital Equipment Fund of $19,150,000. Waterworks Fund of $8,950,000. And the Stormwater Fund of $673,833. In terms of transfer from one fund to another, to the Drug Fund, from the General Fund, $22,000; to the Grant Fund, from the General Fund, $299,752; to the Capital Equipment Fund, from the General Fund, $69,733; to the Capital Facilities Fund, from the General Fund, $750,000; and the Capital Facilities Fund, from the Stormwater Fund, $167,000; and the Stormwater Fund, from the General Fund, $50,000. And the stormwater fund, from the general fund, $50,000.
Any member of council have questions for staff? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
The first reading of ordinance 21-9 for the appropriations amendment.
Second. Any member of council like to discuss ordinance 21-9?
Mr. Sora, I have a, a question. What is the, the difference in what we had appropriated and now what we've amended?
Right. In which fund?
Total.
Total? Tara, do you have that total?
I did not calculate that.
That's okay.
It is broken down to supplemental information you've been provided. It is broken down by fund.
I broke it down, I made each individual fund and looked at the difference, but I didn't look at the difference as a total. I should have followed it.
Thank you. I'll add it up later.
Yeah, I, I would just assume it's a whole lot more than our usual amount.
Well, again, from the debt service fund alone, any, anytime you refund, you have to run that back through the fund.
Okay.
And, and so, you know, our typical debt service fund's about $4 million. But as you're aware, as you're aware, we have done several refundings and one more to go.
Right.
To take advantage of lower interest rates. So, you know, a lot of these things, this is just the accounting piece of that.
Right. Thank you.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, Tara, I believe we're ready to call for roll, or call for vote, excuse me.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance 21-6, amending the zoning map of the city of Bristol by designating property located at 2467 Weaver Pike as one, excuse me, as R1A, low-density, single-family residential district. Staff summarized this issue during the public hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of council have any questions for staff?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 21-6? Hearing none, the public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during the public hearing, so I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Next item on our agenda is the second reading of ordinance 21-7, amending chapter 50 of the city's code of ordinances to prohibit smoking in municipal playgrounds. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize ordinance 21-7?
Yes, Mayor, as councils aware, in 2020, the Tennessee General Assembly approved public chapter 529, which provided local, local governments with the statutory authority to prohibit smoking in public playgrounds, provided the prohibition is approved by two-thirds majority of the governing body. The legislation does define playgrounds as an indoor or outdoor facility that's intended for the recreational use by children and owned by the local government. The Act further defines smoking as the burning of a tobacco product, hemp product, or any other drug of substance, or substance, but it does not include vapor products. As drafted, the city's ordinance prohibiting smoking would apply to facilities such as playgrounds, basketball courts, tennis courts, splash pad, swimming pool, youth league facilities, et cetera. In addition, the prohibition would extend it to similar facilities located in Bristol, Tennessee City School Systems, Facilities. If the, as, as you mentioned, the first reading was approved on April 6th. If you approve on second reading this evening, the ordinance takes place 17 days from tonight, or May 21st.
Any member of council have questions for staff?
I have a question. Is, I may have just missed it last time. Is that, was, what is the reasoning behind not including vaping? Is that because there's not a direct tobacco product involved?
That, that question is best sent to the General Assembly, it's their, it's their legislation, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 21-7?
Just, we appreciate having the, the legislature allowing us to look at this and make a decision. And we had a presentation, I think we all recognized second-hand smoke. First, tobacco use period, and if we can prevent young people from ever starting to smoke, it makes huge, huge difference. And that's adults mentoring well with kids. And then second-hand smoke, and I think even now they're talking about third-hand or whatever, that longer, even more, that there are effects even, just being in an atmosphere that's permeated with old smoke. Anyway, so we appreciate being able to take this action.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution 21-43, adopting a community development block grant and home consortium action plan for fiscal 2022. Staff summarized this matter during the public hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of council have questions for the staff? Motion to approve, approve resolution 2143?
Second.
Would any member of council like to discuss resolution 21-43?
Thank you to all involved in putting it together, and Christina, your, your group very much, thank you.
Okay, the public had an opportunity to commit, to comment on this issue during the public hearing, so I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution 21-44, providing public notice of the city's intent to issue up to $9,800,000 of general obligation bonds in support of several public improvement projects. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, this resolution provides details of the Series 21C bond issue, which calls for a fixed-rate borrowing not to exceed $9.8 million. The bonds will be sold by competitive sale. Capital projects planned for funding for the proceeds of the sale include the funding for the new middle school, beyond that's what has been set aside by, by the Sullivan County Bond Issue, and that's to be shared with the city as well as, as the Bristol, Tennessee School System. A future fire station serving East Bristol and fire suppression equipment, including a new ladder truck and engine. The term of the borrowing is for a period of 30 years for the city's portion of the new middle school funding, 25 years for fire suppression equipment, and 10 years for the school system-supported debt for the new middle school. Resolution 2144 does satisfy the 21-day public notification requirement for the issuance of the debt. In June, staff anticipates bringing a resolution that will, that we will ask you to consider formal adoption to actually issue the, the general obligation bonds. This is just the statutory requirement for public notice of an intent to issue.
Does any member of council have questions for the staff?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would any member of council like to discuss resolution 21-44? Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Hearing none, I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
And just thanks to all who, you know, some, some cities, communities, towns have difficulty issuing bonds and being sure it's done properly, and following all the rules, and thanks to Scott Gibson and Tara's group and Mr. Sora, and we have confidence that we're doing a good job.
Next, we have resolution 21-45, authorizing the creation of funding of a 501(c)(6) nonprofit Bristol Regional Tourism Marketing Corporation. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, this, this issue was discussed in, in depth at our April 27th meeting. This is when you were presenting draft bylaws for the creation of the Bristol Regional Tourism Marketing Corporation, which would be a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization. These bylaws set forth the purpose of the corporation. They establish relationship with the funding entities of the organization, and also allows for future entry by other funding, funding entities or funding governments. It also details the appointment and role of the board of directors, as well as the executive director. As I mentioned, the, the draft bylaws were reviewed at length during the work session. I would like to ask our city attorney at this point to review those items in which council requested to be amended, to make sure that we have the amendments according to the, to the vision of council. Danielle?
Certainly. Can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me if I say over here?
Yeah.
Thank you, because I've got my computer here, so if there's any changes, I can make them quickly. And as Mr. Sora stated, we did make some changes after the work session at the request of council, so I'm going to run through those briefly. Some of them are, are more cosmetic, but we did take out the, we changed the name to reflect what you all wanted to see there, instead of being called a Destination Marketing Corporation, it's now Bristol Regional Tourism Marketing Corporation. We removed references to Bristol, Tennessee specifically, just to make it more clear that it's, it's a potentially regional organization. So, rather than saying Bristol, Tennessee, it says Bristol. We fixed the date of the annual meeting so that it's, it's not fixed, it can be any time in June, so. We clarified that, well, this is a change that I made on my own, but this is, if sunshine laws do end up applying to this organization, which I don't think it's clear that they would, given the current state of law, but if they do, obviously that takes precedence over the bylaws. So, that's just, there's clarification added that, you know, the bylaws don't trump any applicable sunshine laws that might, might be out there. We have changed it from nine directors to 11 directors. That's probably the first really substantive change. We've clarified that when a new member joins, they get a number of board seats, director seats, that are, is proportionate to their financial contribution, their funding commitment to this organization. We removed the two or, one of the biggest changes was in figuring out who's going to be on the board of directors. As drafted initially, we had said two directors from the hotel and lodging industry, two from the restaurant retail industry. We've gone away from that model and just said that we'll have seven directors who are selected from all of those industries. And the specific industries are the hotel and lodging industry, the restaurant, retail, sorry, I'm getting to that place in the bylaws, the attractions, the area destination attractions that we have, and it'll be up to the, the members who are appointing those directors to figure out who is going to come from a particular industry. And we felt like that would give you guys flexibility versus having to find two people from the hotel industry if there's just not two people available to serve. But all of those seven directors will have to be from that collection of industries. We added, to get to the 11 directors, we added two at-large directors. And as, this was sort of a big change, those two at-large directors are going to be selected by the board of directors itself. And so, that will be a nominating process. We've added a description of a nominating committee that's going to go through a process of looking for those directors, and then they'll present those candidates to the board of directors, and the board of directors will vote on them, and those two at-large members. After the initial slate, because your initial slate, you're going to have to approve those, those two at-large directors, or, or, you know, delegate that at some point to the board of directors. But the nominating committee will take over identifying those at-large members going forward. Aside from that, we added the executive director of Believe in Bristol as an ex officio member of the board of directors. So, Maggie left before getting to hear that news, so. The description of the nominating committee, one thing that's in there, if you read that paragraph, is that there must be a governmental representative on the nominating committee. So, government representative or member is a director that is a member of a member's governing body. So, it's a city council member or the mayor. And then the only other thing that would probably be, another change that I made, just to, because I felt like it was one that was necessary, was that in the section that talks about negotiable instruments being signed by the executive director, I added that they should also be signed by the secretary treasurer, because I think that's a, a good practice to have two signatories on checks versus just the executive director having the ability to sign a check with no counter signature. Certainly, the city has two signatures on check, so I don't know why we would do that with anything else. And I made conforming changes to the initial slate, so. Those were the, the changes that were made, and so if there's anything else that we need to change, we can discuss that, we can go through that process now, and.
I had just one question. When we talk about equity partners and seats on the board, is there a, a minimum amount of equity to be contributed to secure a seat on the board?
Not at this point, but I would contemplate that in the event you have another member joining the, the corporation, that you would have a, you are going to have to have a funding agreement with that member.
Right.
And so, as the sole member, it's going to be up to you to say how much you think they should contribute in order to become a member. And if, if there's an expectation that, that someone wants to join without making a contribution, then that, that would be up to you. If you want to allow that, you can, if you don't, then.
So, you don't think that that's something that needs to be determined within the origination of bylaws?
I would not, if only to leave yourselves flexibility to, to go forward, because I think at this point, you, your expectation is that any other member would have to contribute something. We could put in a minimum at this point, but we don't know what that's going to be. And I, I hate to, I think that's something that's better left in the funding agreement, because that's a much more flexible document than the bylaws, really.
Thank you.
My question is about, about the board makeup. Since Bristol, Tennessee is the only member, we, of course, will have to appoint all board members to start out with.
Right.
Are you saying that the city council will be appointing seven board members from those industries, or they will be appointing, or, or the nominating committee will appoint those other seven members?
The seven from the industries will be appointed by, by the city council, by the member, by the city. The two at-large members are the ones who will be chosen by the nominating committee, or who will be, who will be nominated by the nominating committee and then put on the board of directors. Those two at-large members can come from any background, and I think the idea is that they should be people who will contribute to the corporations, to the board of directors, you know, skill sets. We didn't limit it to legal or financial, but there are a lot of boards that do try to look for somebody like that.
My understanding was that the nominating committee would, would, would appoint all board members, or ask other board members to be appointed, and then city council would have final approval on that. My question is this, if we do have a funding committee, a major funding committee to come into the organization, we had talked about that funding partner, or that funding member would probably have high influence on board, on a board member, or board members.
Yes, I mean, anybody who's a funding member is, is going to, I mean, at this point, obviously, if there's only one fun, funding member, then you are going to be choosing all of the directors other than the at-large directors. And I don't know that that's a good or a bad thing, I think that's how you guys, I think what, the discussion from the work session was that that's pretty much how people, how the majority of city council wanted it. Now, if that's not true, then we can make a change. And I will say as well, sorry, I, I did neglect to mention that the nominating committee has the, has the ability to, if there are vacancies in the member-selected seats, the nominating committee can certainly suggest member, or can suggest candidates. The members aren't obligated to select from those candidates, but they can. So, that gives the nominating committee some input into, when you all are making your decision about who to fill, how to fill those seven seats, the nominating committee could certainly say, well, we've identified candidates, and we'd like to talk to you about them.
Okay, I, I just think if, if we're going to encourage other members in there, they need to have a little bit more say-so in, in other members.
Well, if, if other members.
I should say board of directors, excuse me.
If other members do join. If other members do join, depending on how they fund the organization, if they fund 50/50 with the City of Bristol, then they will have equal say with the City of Bristol in choosing those seven directors. And they'll have their own two representatives as governmental representatives, and so the board will go to 13 at that point, because they're equal contributing. If they contribute more, they would have more say, depending, I mean, if that's how you guys want to have it. But my vision is that they would have, if they're an equal contributing partner, they would have equal say over who's being appointed to the board.
Your bylaws do address that, and there, that you have, that if you have a new member that contributes, then they would have a proportionate appointment of new directors as they, after they take their seats. So if they're, if they're an equal partner, as Danielle said, then they're going to have an equal say in the appointment of directors as they're replaced. Your directors are appointed on staggered terms, much like when networks bylaws were amended several years ago. There was one, two, and three-year terms appointed. This is set up the same way.
So if a member, another member wanted to come into the organization and fund it, let's say at $100,000, what do you, what's your vision of it? I could very well see, we could have, and we have three other members identified, potential members, Sullivan County, Washington County, Bristol, Virginia. If they're not able to fund anywhere close to where we are, we're talking about funding us at $500,000 out of the city coffers, what, I mean, if we have one or any of those to come in at $100,000, which is a substantial amount of money, what would that look like?
Well, I think they would have to get at least one government representative. They'd have to have one member of their city council, because you can't have half a person serving. And so you'd have to give anyone who's...
So you're saying that the board would go to 12 members?
You're going to automatically have to increase the number of board members when you add members, if you give everybody a governmental representative seat. It could go to 12, or if you've had two members, it'd go to 13. It really is, in some ways, up to you. If you don't want to, you know, sort of, if you don't want to have the sharing, I mean, if you want to be, if you want to say everybody who comes in should have equal say regardless of their funding, you can certainly craft the bylaws to do that. That just wasn't what we anticipated this council would want to do.
Would it be fair to say, you know, in any type of organizing, as we're doing with this, that it, the bylaws are the bylaws, but they're only the bylaws until the bylaws are changed? And this is, this is very fluid, it's not static, it's fluid to the point of it is what it is for now, but at such time that we would expand to have additional equity partners, it would then take on, we would probably do some type of amendment to the bylaws, or through the agreement, do something along those lines. This is predominantly to make those initial assignments to this board, and that if we continued on as the sole equity partner, it would then be upon us to make those assignments on the rotating basis, realizing that the board once seated would seat two at-large, and that that would be the continuum until there were another equity partner.
Right. And yes, they can be amended, the bylaws can be amended at any time with the consent of the members, and at this point, you're the only member.
Yeah, I got that. I think we should be ready for that. I really, I really think we should have some sort of plan in place that says, if we have someone that comes in, maybe they're not going to contribute as much as the City of Bristol, Tennessee, but maybe they contribute substantially. I think we just need to be thinking about that and seeing how we can, you know, change the bylaws.
Well, and Chad, that was the reason for my question, is because I think we may have some that unexpected, as well as some that we may expect to want to be a part of this. And that was why I asked if, at this juncture, there needed to be a minimum amount established for a seat, so that, I mean, you know, someone come in with $5,000, do they get a seat?
Of course not. I mean, I think, but if somebody came in, if we're wanting to fund this organization at 900 to 1.2 million, which is, let's just say, a million dollars, and somebody comes in at $100,000, we should be ready to, you know, ready to have a plan in place is all I'm asking for. But I think to move us forward, I'm okay with everything for right now.
Okay. I agree, the plan in place is, we'll be thinking about it.
Yeah, I think what Councilwoman Lee, or Powers described there is just exactly what we have to do to get it going. And then, you're right, we have to have a plan to go forward with other partners.
And Chad, I don't know, what I was wondering if you were asking is where the board, at some point, perpetuates itself, that we don't appoint people anymore, that those members together do, or whatever, just like a lot of nonprofit boards that some of us serve on that are not strictly governmental. And that, I think this is how it needs to get going, but I think that's, if that's what that group wants to do, and we like it, or we want to do it, or whatever, then we change it.
But it would take, it would take the approval of this body as the equity partner. And I would say this, that, you know, if you look to, like a networks model, where if there are multiple equity partners, then each of those equity partners would be, have the opportunity to recommend and assign a proportionate amount to the, to the board. But I think that, I think that if it becomes much more than what it is, you know, that's the intent.
Yeah, I was thinking about the number of board members also, too, is I suppose that if somebody came in with, I'm going to use the figure of $100,000, that they could, that could be an appointment to one of those two at-large board seats, if we change the bylaws to reflect that.
Sure.
To keep it at 11.
Yeah.
I just think if, you know, if you started getting 15, 20 board members, you know, but, okay.
I think we're pushing it at 11.
Yeah.
Okay, any additional questions for staff?
I think we included discussion a little bit there, too.
Yep. Okay, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Resolution 2145 to create and fund the 501(c)(6) nonprofit Bristol Regional Tourism Marketing Corporation. Thanks for having the information easy to read.
Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution 21-45? Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? Hearing none, I believe you're ready to vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Keen?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we have the minutes from the April 6, 2021 City Council meeting, minutes from the April 8, 2021 City Council Call Work Session, and minutes from the April 27, 2021 City Council Work Session, and Resolution 2146 awarding a bid for the purchase of 1 ADA compliant van.
Would any member of council like to have any item removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Tara, please call the roll.
Keen?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Next, we have our Board of Education Liaison Report. Dr. Tudor is with us tonight.
It's good to see you all again. It's hard to believe, but this week marks Teacher Appreciation Week, and we're down to our last three weeks of school. So that's the shocking part, is that this school year is finally coming to a close, thankfully. It's been a tough year for everyone involved. We are knee-deep in testing of our students. Some of you all saw examples of that today. I think when we toured the middle school, that testing supplies all over part of the middle school. So we are 10-ready testing in grades three through high school end-of-course exams. Our board and state Board of Ed took action that those, the results of those assessments don't count negatively against our teachers or our students in terms of grades or evaluations. However, the data that we get back from those assessments will really help us determine the depth of learning loss due to the pandemic. So we're, if we can be looking forward to that kind of data, we are looking forward to getting that information so that we know a truer picture of where our students stand in terms of learning loss, and then we can respond accordingly. So we're looking forward to those results. We have class night coming up. We are having a traditional class night in Viking Hall. We have limited guests in attendance and social distancing and security measures in place, but we'll be in person on May 13. We're also hosting a senior walk, where our seniors go back to their elementary schools and also visit Vance, which will be sort of historic and monumentous for them. It'll be the last time they walk through that facility and the last senior walk in that facility, so that's pretty significant. We'll have Tennessee High School graduation on May 21 in the Stone Castle Outdoors. If it rains that evening, we'll have it the very next morning. We will get it in, but it will be outside. Again, limited attendance, but with the intent to have it outdoors. And then our graduation for Tennessee Online Public School will be Saturday evening, May the 22nd. So excited about having some normal end-of-the-year events. As I said before, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. Obviously, it's been an extremely challenging school year for teachers all across the nation. Our teachers are no exception to that. We embarked on a staff and community appreciation initiative a few weeks ago. Many of you contributed to that, I appreciate that. We also had the City of Bristol contribute to that initiative. We've had over 25 donors who've donated well over 300 different gifts of a variety of amounts and sizes, so we appreciate that support for our teachers and our staff, in particular this week for teacher appreciation. I'd like to recognize Chief Wade for his service and Major Eads. I appreciate the support. I'm new to this position, but not new to the district, and certainly know the extent of your support for our school district and our boys and girls in keeping our students and staff safe. So I appreciate your service to our community, certainly, but also our school district. So thank you for that. And then finally, I would also like to acknowledge, thank you for joining us on the tour today and for the conversation that ensued after that. We are excited to partner with you, certainly on the middle school. We are so excited about being able to open the doors to that great facility and give our students and staff just a wonderful future in that facility, lots of great opportunities ahead. But also then, what comes next, and how can we support certainly the initiatives of the city in terms of economic development and the focus of education in our community? We're certainly very willing and eager to partner with you all and the community in that endeavor. So thank you for that conversation and for inviting us to have that today. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. Because I know that this, I'm going to, I just, I got word that, I guess, Sullivan County has rescinded all of their COVID restrictions, the Sullivan County school system, including masks. And so I know that everyone sitting up here will be getting those questions of how well...
We will not be.
Okay.
We are maintaining the mask requirement in our school district for the rest of the school year, as well as distancing as much as possible. Like I said, we're limiting attendance at our end-of-the-year events. That includes elementary awards days, for instance, and awards day for Vance. They're actually doing that in Viking Hall, so they can spread out and have more folks. So we're maintaining everything that we've had in place up to this point, will carry us through the next two weeks.
Perfect.
Dr. Tudor, I'll have a question, but I would like to ask this council to recognize all the teachers and all the staff for Teachers Appreciation Week with a stand-up and a round of applause. If you can take that back, everyone, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you. Appreciate that.
And the middle school looks amazing, so...
Thank you. Thank you for your support of that as well, with the bond and your financial contribution. We appreciate it.
Great job, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll move on to City Manager's Report.
It's just a couple of items, Mayor. Our work session will be held in person, as is necessary at this point, on Tuesday, May 25 at 11 o'clock. I'd like to suggest, though, we use the Nature Center Classroom. That'll give us a little bit more of an opportunity to socially distance at that time. Both the cafeteria and our gymnasium will be back in play as far as our senior center. And I think the, I think the Nature Center Classroom, not only is it just an excellent setting, but it'll also give us a little bit more opportunity to socially distance than our traditional venue of the Annex Conference Room, if that's okay. I'd also like to remind council of Tuesday, May 25, public meeting that we mentioned earlier, with our pedestrian, the presentation of our pedestrian trail study. It'll be at 6:00 p.m. in the Slater Center Gymnasium. Again, our consulting engineers will be here to detail the study, or at least Phase One of the study, from Roosterfront Park to Bristol Motor Speedway. It's very good news. I mentioned, when we're talking about the budget amendment for fiscal '21, I mentioned the refunding. Earlier today, bids were received for our Series 2021A general obligation refunding bonds. This issue refunded the outstanding Series 2012 and 2015 bonds. You may recall from our work session a month or so ago, it was estimated that the city would realize approximately $496,000 in savings from just those two bonds. In reality, today, Bristol had a very good day. The refunding actually realized $852,924 in savings. The Series 2014 general obligation bonds are callable later this month, and consequently, our Series 2021B refunding bonds will be sold at that time.
What did we expect out of it?
We expected $495,881 was the estimate that we got from Cumberland Securities. The low bid interest rate was 1.63.
Oh, my gosh.
You're a good credit risk. You're a good credit risk.
Oh, my goodness.
Sadly, that's the good stuff. The bad stuff is this is our last meeting with Tara Musick, as our city reporter. She has taken a position with our school system as their chief financial officer or finance director. We're truly going to miss you, Tara. Your leadership amongst the staff, and certainly also with council, we recognize your vast experience. We're really glad you're not going very far, but we certainly wish you the best as you move to the next step on your career journey. We wish you the best, and we're going to miss you. Thank you for all that you've done for us.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, that concludes my reports. Okay, council comments?
I'll jump in, I've got just a few. Tara, when I was first elected to council, I met with you, and you were so patient in explaining the finances of the city, the complexities of them, the different funds, how we generate revenues, and, you know, you are a tremendous, tremendous asset to the city. And while we hate to lose you, I think that the fact that you're just going across the street to the school system, we still feel great that you're still a part of us, so you will be missed. And to Chief Wade, you will be missed as well, and to Tim Eads, he will be missed. And so it's always hard to lose people that have contributed so much, but we know that you've left us in a good position. The tour at the middle school today was simply amazing. You see things on drawings, and you see pictures, and you hear about it, but until you're standing in the middle of it and can be so immersed in it, you just don't really understand. And Sullivan County Commissioner David Aker is with us this evening, and I think that it's important that we all acknowledge and recognize the county's role in all of this and through their school improvement plan. We could certainly not have done it without the county, and the county did take the lead on all of this, and we thank you very much, along with our other Bristol commissioners and those throughout the county. So thank you very much.
I'll do what you said with Tara and Chief, it's, wish you the best, both of you.
I'll do that as well. We're going to miss you guys. I'll also say to Dave and, and our other Sullivan County commissioners, that you've been mentioned a couple of times today, but I know you're going to be, I think we're going to be planning another meeting, and I think you guys are going to be invited, and at least I think that's the direction we're going in, as, as long as we can social distance and make it, make everything happen. Sullivan County is also mentioned in our new organization for our destination marketing organization, and so you'll hear more about that in the near future. I want to say thank you to David, or, excuse me, thank you to Jeff Miller and Brandon Rutherford, our two employees, who did an excellent job, and were very courteous to a gentleman who, who passed away, and I think that just reflects, you know, our culture within the city employees, so really appreciate them for what they have done. Thanks to our school system, the, the middle school was just wonderful today, and I can't wait for others in the community to see that. We had a great month in April with racing, very successful month, multiple times during the month, downtown was packed, other restaurants and organizations and hotels were packed through the weekend, thanks to Bristol Motor Speedway for what they have done. And I'll just end with one thing about the school system also, I learned a lot about childcare and preschoolers and that type of stuff, so the more we can learn about curriculum and, and the way you organize and the way you move forward, I think it really helps us to understand, so I appreciate that as well. That's all I've got.
So I'll pick up from that and to also, teacher appreciation and the discussion today, and part of that was being reminded of some things that maybe we know but we forget, and things that we maybe don't know, and the recognition of how hard it is to get the word out to our community for some of the different programming that's going on that is awesome, and we don't have it always painted for us in one picture that we can appreciate where we are with some of the things. So I think figuring out the best way to communicate that, those stories and that progress and those programs as often as we can is critical for our whole community. So appreciated that today, and hopefully some discussion going forward, too, for how to, how to better communicate some of those things with our community. Also, today, we had a lot of proclamations, there's always a lot of different things going on. In addition to Teacher Appreciation Week that we didn't have on our proclamations, today is also World Health Day, and I hope at some point we'll take time to appreciate our health department in particular for their partnership with us, and also our health workers that we've recognized different times throughout all this. And my husband this evening said the celebration today is that Sullivan County had no positive COVID tests today. So that is first time in, I don't know how long since we have had a day without a positive test, so we hope that that is the trend going forward, and we certainly appreciate everybody who continues to take care and is very careful when we're in public and in big groups, and hoping that folks will take advantage of vaccinations. We heard that the library is going to offer it. There's several different places that are going to have days. I think Slater Center is going to have one. Do you, Terry, what, do you have a date for that? So watch for it, we're going to have it at Slater, so I think the trend is trying to make those vaccinations easier for people to get, so bringing them to you, to your community, to your neighborhood, so that it's easy to, to do that. And lastly, it's been nice to give accolades to Chief Wade, but it's my understanding, this is not your last meeting, and just because we recognized you tonight does not mean that you can, can miss next time. So anyway, we regret that we look forward to seeing you next month and wishing you well at that time, so I think that's it.
I'll just finish up by saying that, you know, I can't thank everyone enough from the bottom of my heart for everything that everyone does every day in this city. And with all these wonderful comments, there, there's nothing else that I, that I think I can add, other than, again, this meeting is adjourned.